Forstham the love of liberty in the voice of hope and prayer. With Godless faith in our destiny we solemnly declare. Side by side we stand, pilots of the blue Caribbean sea. Let's all get them down, we pleasure us to thee. There every great race find an equal place and may God bless our nation. There every great race find an equal place and may God bless our nation.
Let's bow our head in prayer. Almighty and eternal supreme being, the light of all lights, the creator of the universe, we give thanks and sing your praise alone, for you are guide and protector. Supreme being, please continue to bestow upon us your mercies and compassion, that we shall be pleased and be pleased all in the city of San Fernando. We shall glorify your name to the world through our living examples. Almighty being, your light shine upon this city and our country. Keep us away from all forms of darkness and that we shall always acknowledge your greatness, for without your presence nothing will be achieved. Amen.
Good day ladies and gentlemen, we then all have to say to briefing, thank you. Welcome ladies and gentlemen to the San Fernando.
Minutes of the meeting held on 26th of June, corrections and omission. If someone can have some more motion please. Leadership, deputy CEO, members of council, ask for confirmation of the minutes of the 30th statutory meeting of the 10th San Fernando City Council, held on Wednesday 26th of June 2019.
Leadership, deputy mayor, members of council, Marabella South, Mr Bella, rise to second.
All in favor, any against, any abstention in motion, sky. Matters arising from the minutes, page 2. We have matter 3.1 with reference to parking at the San Fernando General Hospital. I just want to report and repeat that issues raised by citizens are why we are not providing adequate parking for persons visiting the hospital. I mean it quite clear that the San Fernando City Corporation has no jurisdiction over the hospital, it's a private entity operated by Suara and its board of directors and they are the ones responsible for parking and it really falls under the Ministry of Health. I'm going to make that point over again, so we could provide some clarification on what is happening there. 3.2 as well, as we look at socially displaced persons in the city of San Fernando, members again, we have to continue with the NGO and the operation on the work where we are providing meals for persons there and that is continued on a weekly basis and it's quite successful to date and the NGOs do a lot of work on regaining. Private citizens are calling in and want to make contribution in terms of their donation and bringing in food staff on a weekend, so that continue to be a success. Also, we are asking and we continue to ask people to disperse from feeding the persons on the street. We recently heard where a homeless person molested a lady passing on the promenade and we speak about this continuously, so people, the public can be aware of the danger, particularly where we have so many persons looking in and also we have exposure through the social media, that the persons who congregate, the homeless persons who congregate on the promenade are most times under the influence of alcohol and uncontrollable and they are molesting citizens, particularly young children and ladies, so we have to really address this problem and I don't know what the solution would be. Miss King, I will ask you to have your officers, I know we spoke about that some time ago, to have your officers patrolling, I should say, the promenade at critical times when there are people gathering there, therefore the chances may be, but it provides a level of safety and security, so we can do that. So we move on to page 3. Development of Skinner Park and just to give members an update, that we are in the process of handing over the park to the cut, that will be done within the week, by the end of this week or next week actually, where we are handing over the facility to Skinner Park where the redevelopment project will start and San Fernando will be very pleased with the development of this facility as it gives us the opportunity to address some long outstanding issues. Skinner Park have not been touched since 1966, under the watch of former mayor Ermehabio, when he resurfaced the asphalt track and brought lights to Skinner Park, making Skinner Park the first sporting facility in Trangtobego where we had lights. That have not been touched since 1966, we are a long way from that and we must undergo meaningful seeing the value of making that kind of investment for San Fernando, as we could probably produce another, here's the Crawford, another Kishon, another Cibidamartin and all those permanents, athletes who have been trying to be good proud and we started their trading under program in Skinner Park, so we are very grateful to the government for investing in Skinner Park and we may have to make a sacrifice because Skinner Park will take about a year, the plan is to have it ready by January of 2021. The main ground will not be available during that period, the second class ground will be available, it will really be a state of the art facility when it's completed, similar to the development of Queen's Park Savanna, somewhere that will make us proud for our events. We are looking at some temporary arrangement to relocate the netballers, the basketballers and the footballers, there are some proposals inside and we're meeting with them on Saturday morning to have further discussion, so we expect that the park will start within a couple of weeks once the handing over, sorry, Monday, Saturday, sorry, Monday is performed. Miss King, I look forward to a really exciting time for us in the city. We move to page 7. 12.4, transfer police officers, Miss King, can you give us a update with your, I know I saw a report from you, that the 23 officers we have, 53 officers that you have in municipal police in your, on your corps right now, your charge?
That is the actual strength, that's the actual strength that we have right now sir, however, the active strength is not 53, because we have persons on sick leave, vacation leave, maternity leave, all these different types of leave, so we are now down to about 49 persons, there about?
So you have 49 actual?
Yes.
At your disposal?
Yes sir.
And the next batch is due when?
At the end of August of this year.
Of August, and that will take us to how many?
It should be maybe just a little over 75.
So we should have a strength of 75 officers at your corps, because there are persons, business persons who are concerned about what happens on high street, like we call that, in terms of protections, theft and light, where we are, what's happening in the country, so there should be a plan to more likely to those officers on a regular basis to ensure that the high streets, Mokorapa Street and other businesses are protected?
Well, not just in the core areas in San Fernando, but also along Marabella, in particular market area, we will have some officers being stationed there on a 24/7 basis, so they would not only be attached to duties at the market, but they would also be within that area dealing with any kind of traffic congestion, whatever the situation, illegal vending, default works.
Because there's a rule, a law in pass where we need some adjustment to the Jarvis Street, what they pay here, and the absence of officers there, nobody adhering to the law, so we have to address that also with our attention, vendors doing vegetables at Library Corner, the market vendors at Central Market are complaining because people no longer come into the market, they're doing their purchase at Library Corner and we have carts in the taxi stands selling burbodi and the looks, so we really have to address that. And this morning, I saw where the street, the stretch on the promenade, in front of the library, now there is some, I should put it, some, we have made some allowances for the, for the food vendors to stay on the left side if you're going southwest on the promenade, but now there's a tent, looked like a tent by tent, adjacent to the island, clothes hanging there, the food, the vegetables being sold there, so we have to address that, because once that, we allow that to continue, that whole structure will be ending.
Yes sir, I'm in agreement with what you're saying, you know, other things have been said in the past, but now we are looking at regularizing and redirecting those persons from there, so again, with the extra strength that we are getting very soon, all these problems would be addressed in a better way sir.
And the other thing we have to look at too is the, it is not aesthetically pleasing because they have varied colored tents, they have some plastic arrangement and it is not looking good, so we have to, I mean if we could find some consistency and regularize it so it could look, you know, present.
In an orderly manner, yes.
So we can look at that, thank you.
Leadership, deputy CEO, members of council, Monica Navet, rise for the following announcements. Ms Rosemary Mongal, aunt of the deputy mayor Vidya Mongal de Cecil, she died on February 26th, sorry, her date of birth was February 26th, 1943, she departed this life Sunday 14th, July 2019 and her entombment took place in Canada. We also had our old CEO, his mother, Barmati Ramchad Singh, she was born on the 27th of January 1944, she died on the 27th of July 2019 and her entombment was yesterday. We also had a Mr Noel David, who's a renowned businessman from Marabella, he had a catering service and was one of the first people involved in the school feeding program, he died on the 24th, sorry, he was born on the 24th of December 1935, he died on the 20th of July 2019 and his funeral was on the 24th of July. I have one other, the mother of Mr Desmond Clifford, His Worship will speak to that one.
Thank you councillor, here to announce the passing of Mrs Dulcina Benedine Clifford, she was born 26th of May 1920 and died on the 8th of July 2019. I was able to visit her 99 birthday party on the 26th of May this year and we all spoke with her and pledged that she'll have one for another year, she can make the century. Unfortunately, she got another call in to be in another place on the 8th of July and she was the wife of the late Buick Clifford and for those of us from the late San Fernando, Buick Clifford was a former deputy mayor and a member of this council for a long period in the 70s and the 80s. She's also the mother of Althea Clifford, Dr Keith Clifford, those of us who have known the Dr Keith Clifford that was starting the morning program, Desmond, Patrick, Grace and Earl Clifford, she had a grandmother of 28, great-grandmother of 36 and what is strange about that is only two of her children will be responsible for most of those grand and great-grandchildren, so all the others, and some of you are already familiar what I'm talking about, I think Desmond had 14 and Patrick had 11. So we live in a time when people make one and two children, but in those days, I mean she had nine, her son had 12, that's how it used to be in those days, but Mr Clifford was a very, very hardworking social worker, he belonged to the Lions and contributed considerably to other organizations and helping those who are in the needy, so we will all stand for a minute of silence.
People's and correspondents to be lead.
Your Worship, members of council, members of administration, we have a thank you letter from Belgro's Skinner Home with respect to the street naming and unveiling of the Belgro Lean. The Belgro Skinner Home would like to thank the corporation for this venture.
Thank you, serious honour, since the addition of education petition. Acceptance, finance planning and allocation.
Your Worship, members of council, deputy CEO, members of administration, I rise for the acceptance of the finance planning and allocation of resources committee reports of the meetings held on the 4th of June 2019, the 11th of June 2019 and the 18th of June 2019.
One second please.
Your Worship, Mrs CEO, members of council, members of administration, ladies and gentlemen, rise.
All in favor, any against, any abstention in motion, sky, public health?
Good morning, Your Worship, members of council, Mr Deputy CEO, members of administration, ladies and gentlemen, I, Olloman, you understand, do rise for the acceptance of the public health committee report held on the 4th of June 2019.
Your Worship, Deputy CEO, members of council, Marabella South, Mr Bella, rise to second.
All in favor, any against, any abstention in motion, sky, physical infrastructure?
Good morning, Your Worship, Deputy CEO, members of council, members of administration, councillor Anna Warr, Supreme, rises for the acceptance of the physical infrastructure and transport committee meeting, held on the 4th of June 2019.
Second please.
Your Worship, Mrs CEO, members of administration, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, rise to second.
All in favor, any against, any abstention in motion, sky, personal?
Good morning, Your Worship, Mr Deputy CEO, members of council, I, Olloman, Thomas, rise for the acceptance of the committee report, held on the 11th of June 2019.
Second please.
Your Worship, Deputy CEO, Monica Navet, rise to second, the report.
All in favor, any against, any abstention in motion, sky, committee reports for adoption, planning and development?
Your Worship, Mr Deputy CEO, members of council, members of administration, I rise for the adoption of the planning and development committee report of meeting held on 11th of June 2019.
Second please.
Your Worship, Mr Deputy CEO, members of council, members of administration, Marabella East, please to second.
All in favor, any against, any abstention in motion, sky, parks and institution?
Your Worship, Deputy CEO, members of council, Marabella South, Mr Bella, rise for the adoption of the parks and institution committee report, held on the 14th of June 2018.
Your Worship, Mr Deputy CEO, members of council, I beg to second.
All in favor, any against, any abstention in motion, sky, general purposes?
Your Worship, Mr Deputy CEO, members of council, I beg for the adoption of the committee report, meeting held on the 11th of June 2019.
Deputy CEO, members of administration, ladies and gentlemen, rise to second.
All in favor, stay on your feet, deputy, all in favor, any against, any abstention in motion, sky, education and development?
Thank you, Your Worship, ladies and gentlemen, rise for the adoption of the education and youth development committee report of the meeting held on the 11th of June 2019.
Your Worship, Deputy CEO, members of council, members of administration, ladies and gentlemen, rise to second.
All in favor, any against, any abstention in motion, sky, tourism and heritage?
Your Worship, members of council, deputy CEO, members of administration, I rise for the adoption of the tourism and heritage committee report of the meeting held on 4th of June 2019.
Second please.
Good morning, Your Worship, members of council, Mr Deputy CEO, members of administration, I, Olloman, you understand, do second.
All in favor, any against, any abstention in motion, sky, arts and culture?
Your Worship, Mr Deputy CEO, members of council, Koki Turuba, rise for the adoption of the arts and culture committee meeting held on the 18th of June.
Second please.
Your Worship, Mr Deputy CEO, members of council, members of administration, ladies and gentlemen, rise to second.
All in favor, any against, any abstention in motion, sky, public claims and liabilities?
Your Worship, Mr Deputy CEO, members of council, members of administration, ladies and gentlemen, rise for the adoption of the committee report for public claim liability held on the 18th of June 2019.
Second.
Good morning, Your Worship, members of council, Mr Deputy CEO, members of administration, I, Olloman, you understand.
All in favor, any against, any abstention in motion, sky, sports and social services?
Your Worship, Deputy CEO, Monica Navet, rise for the adoption of the sports and social services committee report of meeting held on the 18th of June 2019.
One second please.
Your Worship, members of council, deputy CEO, members of administration, I rise to second.
All in favor, any against, any abstention in motion, sky, security and disaster management?
Your Worship, members of council, Koki Turuba, rise for the adoption of the security and disaster meeting held on the 18th of June 2019.
Second please.
Your Worship, Mr Deputy CEO, members of council, I beg to second.
All in favor, any against, any abstention in motion, sky, our final committee assessment?
Your Worship, Mr CEO, Deputy CEO, members of council, members of administration, I rise for the adoption of the assessment committee report of meeting held on the 18th of June 2019.
Your Worship, members of council, deputy CEO, members of administration, ladies and gentlemen, rise to second.
All in favor, any against, any abstention in motion, sky, Mr Deputy CEO, do we have any petitions?
None, Your Worship.
Any emotions?
None, Your Worship.
Personal explanations?
None, Your Worship.
Questions?
None, Your Worship.
Other urgent matters?
None, Your Worship.
As we move forward, members are, will bring greetings and also should be aware, site and time for the city of San Fernando, in lieu of the various ongoing projects geared towards development of the city infrastructure, services and its citizens. Our city continues to be one of the most active participants in the growth of the Republic of Taran Togago, this journey is never ideal or smooth in its nature, but requires the tenants of knowledge, wisdom and iteration if we are to achieve this ever evolving goal. There are many indicators that highlight the makings of progress, in a recently conducted NACTOPOLs, these factually derived indicators of public opinion were tabulated. In this regard, I am pleased to report that San Fernando has shown their resounding support for this team based on the results of the poll. Once San Fernandians are pleased with our performance, things will stay the same, as we all know, performance beats all talk. Our momentum has committed where we seek to simultaneously address other pressing matters. Hopefully, the town and country planning unit will understand the plight of our citizens and their concerns that have been brought to our attention over time, which we can now address. These include both the process for approvals and identifying loopholes that allow illegal structures to creep through the system. A collaboration between both entities will without a doubt ensure that proper procedures are adhered to. The continuous cycles of housing development have led to the growth and decline of our city status. Unfortunately, we are now faced with the unbridled growth of abandoned properties interspersed throughout. During these economic cycles, these now dilapidated buildings have become breeding grounds for women and criminal activity, which represents a lynchpin in our social economic development that we must now attend to with urgent necessity. As such, we have received approval to remove the following four buildings, number one, Port Alphany Koki, number 15 St Madeline Street, number 18 and 18 A Drayton Street, 119 Fifth Avenue, Marshlands, Marabella and these will be done at a date to be announced. Another continuous matter brought to our attention is the abundance of illegally erected billboards and banners throughout San Fernando, particularly on the bypass, this can be distracting and can result in serious accidents and loss of life. We intend to address these issues as well as address the legality of these structures with the assistance of the town and country planning department, who are responsible for approval assisted by the municipal police. Another matter contentious in our beloved San Fernando is our beloved San Fernando Hill, which is very important to us, however, I must inform the public that the maintenance of the hills is under the purview of the Ministry of Agriculture, as such matters pertaining to mining or excavation must be granted permission from the Ministry of Energy. Having said that, several questions have been raised by persons on the operations on the hill. The corporation and more specifically, the engineering department has been observant and vigilant where approvals are concerned. With regards to the flash flooding that has been occurring due to the inclement weather, the disaster management unit plans to assess and upgrade drainage within the city. These areas include Scott Street, Presidentville Bypass, Rushwood Street, corner of Sutton and Pendants Avenue, Govville Link Road, the vicinity of PTSC and the entrance to San Fernando General Hospital, the corner of Agnes Street and Southern Road, Marabella, the corner of Freeling and Rushwood Street, Cypress Boulevard and Coconut Drive, Mokorapa Street, Leoto Street and St Madeline Street. The citizens of San Fernando have entrusted their support to this council and we have a duty among responsibility to uphold our pledge. Additionally, our social media posts are not PR, but are in fact a means of informing San Fernandians of the works in and around the city. Such works include bulkways collection, spraying for mosquitoes, public health issues, paving of streets and sheltering displaced persons. We'll continue to lose to our fellow San Fernandians as feedback is essential to the understanding of our people's needs. Our success lies in the members of the council and the citizens of San Fernando to work in concert with one another on accepting the mutually shared responsibility we all have in making this city the example by which others follow. In so doing, this responsibility also encompasses our individual accountability. It's only through our cooperation that we will be able to achieve the creation of a strong foundation for upcoming and future development. It is in this regard that I wish to thank the citizens of San Fernando for their continued support. For example, we have decided to address certain issues as we look at the how San Fernando was shaped over the years. In this regard, a committee was appointed by council to name streets, this committee comprised of Mr David Sami, Ms Joyce Caesar and Ms Deborah Jarbattis, they have the responsibility of naming streets in and around the city and if we look at the wall behind us, most of the streets are named after those gentlemen and ladies behind them and they are all politicians, former mayors who share a city, but we have to view that there are several other persons who have contributed to development in San Fernando and must not only be politicians. We have to look at the lives of Mr Keith Belgro, for instance, the Belgros Skinner Home, who started their business in... their business in eighteen eighty-six, when Mrs, no, eighteen forty-six, when the grandmother came from Barbados and started a small fire parlor in St James' in San Fernando, being the first female in San Fernando, they would have made a contribution. We look at Mr Bobby Mohammed, the first San Fernando to win a panorama for San Diego so proud, with the street after, Mr Hayley Crawford, one of our first gold medal. Those are persons who have contributed. There's a gentleman by the name of Mr Ram Singh, who sold coconut at corner of Drayton Street and Coffee Street for years, for years. When mothers wanted to get a bottle of coconut water, he went to Coffee Street to gather coconut water. Those are people who have made invaluable contributions and those should be recognized in so doing. And we have to, this committee is going to have comprehensive look and of course to be consultation with the public as we proceed in looking after naming some of these streets. Having said that, we have to look at the history of emancipation as we move into this very critical time of emancipation celebration. And of those of us who follow what's happening on current events and affairs, you will see where the Prime Minister last week spoke about emancipation and he made a comment that African people have not done as much as they should. And that has to be taken in context of the history of San Fernando and trend for that matter. What is the history of emancipation? The journey our African ancestors would have made over the years? However, history has shown that the colonial structure then and the structures that oppose now have been shown, have been continuously active from August the first in eighteen thirty-eight until now, we have not done what we're supposed to do and we need support. Physical shackles and manacles have been exchanged for bars and chains, much more difficult to break free. Bob Marley said, "To emancipate yourself from mental slavery, none but ourselves can free our mind." The mighty sparrow expanded the reality of this in the song Slave, when he said, "And then times change in so many, many, many ways." Then one day somebody said, "Free the bloody slaves." I was then put out on the street. Aha, no clothes, no food and no place to sleep. Worst of all, I had no education, no particular ambition. This I cannot conceal, forget my native culture and live like a vulture from the white man I had to steal. What was taken from ancestors was not just freedom, but a necessary tool for the restructuring of a people, their culture and identity. Even in this speech, I strove to find a legendary African giant, but to no avail. I had to use Greek mythology, take me from another culture. However, in my reading, I came across what can be argued, one of the most critical individuals in the reconstruction of African culture and Taran Tabago society, based on our heritage and history. His work was unequivocally the bedrock foundation of the Pan-African movement that sought to unite all men and women of African heritage and ancestry. It was the cornerstone of the ideologies of Heidi Salassi, Martin Luther King Junior, Marcus Garvey, Nelson Mandela and Malcolm X. He was the founding father of the ideal force, science of former slaves, who had begun their odious journey to success, to dignity and human rights, must bond together as one and rise. This man that was able to influence those, these known giants of history, who fought against injustice, discrimination, hatred and fear, was born in a little village called Aruka in eighteen sixty-nine. His name was Henry Sylvester Williams. In his youth as a teacher and cultured, educated individual, he was surrounded by a cast of educated, articulated and race conscious men who planted the initial ideology within him to aspire to this great cause. Educated at the Canadian University, he immediately began to break barriers, forming the first colored hockey league in the late eighteen nineties while studying law. On his own efforts, he then traveled to England where he made a living lecturing and unlike many, paid for his own education, eventually passing the bar exams. All the while, he noted with chattering the still pervasive manner in which people of African ancestry were treated. In eighteen ninety-seven, he founded the Pan-African Association, which began to attract the attention of other like minded, like minded individuals across the world, including W. E. B. Dua. Many people, black and other, all condemned the idea to a lifespan of a couple months that is still alive today. The work of Henry Sylvester Williams needs to continue to fuel the drive for equality and equity through the strengthening of the African centric community. We must continue to seek out our traditions, understand our history, then and only then we will be able to move on. We must change our attitudes away from self destructive tendencies toward a formation of enlightenment about our culture and heritage. Most importantly, we must stop viewing each other as enemies and more like allies. Only then we began to, we can begin to, begin to attain a cause towards the ideas set out by Henry Sylvester Williams, when we begin to finally retain our place among all people. Only then will we, as a collective, begin our ascent back towards greatness and awareness to where we belong. If we want to go far, the only way is together. I want to take the opportunity at this time to wish everyone a happy Emancipation Day tomorrow. Members, permit me to recognize our former mayor of San Fernando and could you just stand please, Mr Ian Artley? And Mr Artley's face on picture is somewhere outstanding between the backdrop. And I had the opportunity of sitting with Mr Artley when I was an old man. I sat right across there, and that would mean to two thousand and three onwards, and I must tell you, he's one of the more passionate mayor that passed through this city. I can recall an incident when we went to NCC to seek funding and Mr Artley actually cried. He told the NC chairman, "You cannot treat us like this." And the sorry he had to pay as he wrote it down on his eyes and I really felt that, something I cannot emulate too, but it's all passion. But many people don't understand responsibility behind here, but when you sit on this chair, you will become almost the father of the city. You have so much to do and sometimes in your difficulty and struggle, it brings out the emotion in you. So Mr Artley, we thank you for your contribution and service and we recognize your presence here this morning. We also have in our presence a very young people who would have been successful in their exams and a group of other persons, beginning with the San Fernando Greater Chamber of this man, who came up with a very noble idea and they came to me and said, "We want to assist those people who were outstanding, who have worked very, very hard." And the SCA exams to begin with, it is probably the most difficult challenge any parent can have. I do envy any of you who've been through that. That's something that I've been debating and been spoken about right now, about how do we treat with it, the stress you produce to your children through. So any commendation, any acknowledgement, any accolade, any gift that we could give to them really is a small token in terms of their contribution. We as members of this council are very proud of you. It doesn't matter what school you pass for, it's the effort that you made and your appreciation. Do not be, do not be daunted by the fancy schools, you know. I know many, many successful persons who went to lesser known schools, right, including your, this mayor, I'm one of them. I can also, I can call two politicians that went to Presidentville. Mr Anan Ramlogan went to Presidentville, Counselor Terrace, I know, Mr Counselor Terrace went to Presidentville, and I can wish you success. And, and Mr Anan Ramlogan was a former Attorney General, but he went to Presidentville. And who else went to other schools? So it's, the school when you come to, Marabella Junior Sec? She said, the better schools. Marabella Junior Sec is sitting right here, understand? So you have to look at the context. You have to work very, very hard and what is, what you put in it is what you're going to get out of it. So parents, don't be daunted by that, just work hard, solely on with your children, give them the support that they need and love them, love them, love them and you will achieve the success. So today we are here to, I will thank Mr Kiran Singh and his team for the contribution and they came well, they're more dressed than the councillors of them, right? So this is important because you're, you will be on YouTube, this will be outside there, for people will be all over, they will be seeing this, this, this function this morning, this ceremony this morning. So at this point, Ms Lee, can you assist me please? As I look at you all, I'm seeing a very distinguished gentleman, I don't know what, where you're from, I'm seeing Mr Hansley Ojoda, TV personality, right, for just this morning. And for those of you who may not know, we just celebrated, well, recognized an event, which was the nineteen ninety event, which occurred on twenty seventh of July. Mr Hansley Ojoda is one of the persons who was involved around that era, around that time, that period, and maybe one of, I see one of the voices that we heard? You were one of the voice that held us together with that dynamic San Fernando voice. You're not a poor boy, by the way? A sound boy? A San Fernando, let's hear the voice, you're the voice, Mr Hansley Ojoda, we're very proud of San Fernando. So we will, pardon? But I'm going to the arts, I was talking about the comment, but he, yeah, yeah, no boundary, right? And he was in, and he, he has got to look like me in recent times, but at one time he had, he had a full head of hair. Your students and it's a collaborative effort between the councillors and the, and the South Chamber. So our first person, let my assistant here to help me. Right, Mr Josiah Banfield, that name is long familiar. And I'll call on the Deputy CEO to present to Mr Josiah Banfield. Okay, who's assisting now there? Inside there? Amanda. And Josiah, Josiah is here? Is somebody representing Josiah? Is she here? Is somebody coming forward? Okay, deputies, mayor will receive a new driver Josiah because the places from Josiah, Islam from deputies district, Deputy Barry C. for Josiah. And it's said a token, a book voucher for a very large sum to assist with the collection. This one came, and deputy, you should stay on, stay on your feet. The next one is Samaya Heerwood. Is Samaya here? Somebody, okay. There's Samaya? Right, Samaya Wood, athletic school, we've just got a park. Her name was Deputy Mayor again to Samaya, who's from her, from her electoral district. Congratulations, Samaya. Samaya, you want to see in Skidna Park, Samaya? Our next councillor, Mr Williams. I'm here calling Kider Fortune. Kider? Kider Fortune? Yeah. A young man from the district of his green acres, I suspect. Yeah. Mr Fortune is well dressed. Congratulations, young man. Okay, okay. So we go straight to Abraham Warwick, councillor, your person, from the area district of Koki Turuba, Mr Master Abraham Warwick, is he here? Is Mr Warwick? Abraham just passed, I see. Abraham, Abraham, well fed. Abraham, we have to hear, it's gonna park for you too. Thank you, councillor. Our next person, councillor Arnold Sugarm, and we look at Jeremy Adams, Jeremy here? From the district of Marabella East. They produce good footballers. Very sporty, very trendy, I must say. Congratulations. And we move to the Marabella West, Malaika Francis, is she here? Malaika? Is Malaika? What? I retain green marsh. So we have Malaika Francis, Collected, that councillor Reverend Smith from the Marabella West area. We're very proud of these young people. Plenty candidates at Skidna Park. Councillor Patricia Wilson, your turn. If we look to Tiffany Joseph, is she here? Tiffany Joseph? I feel I select this child and good looks, have you seen some cute, some little cuties coming up there? Congratulations, Tiffany. Make us proud. Councillor Montano? Cristiano Francis, a football name, Cristiano here? Cristiano. Well, another one again, he'll cook a six footer. How old are you, Cristiano? How old are you? Twelve? Twelve and green. Cristiano Francis, congratulations. It's all a, it's all a league officer. Councillor Price? Christian Garcia? Yeah. Congratulations, Christian. Okay, so this, that will complete our, our selection from the councillors, from the electoral district, they identified the outstanding person. We now move to another group, would have been very successful at another level, and that is the young lady. Is she here? Yeah. Extremely outstanding. She attended Grand Memorial Presbyterian School on Coffee Street, and her name is Siri Barya Moody, and she topped the country, the island, the double, the S X, and congratulations, young lady. Myself and Mr Kiran Singh will go try to meet there.
Did you work very hard?
Yes.
You study?
Yes.
Did you play?
Yes.
You played? You go there, so, so what sport do you?
I like to do martial arts.
Martial arts?
She can give us a live demonstration?
So you want to show some martial arts?
Congratulations, Siri, I will very, very proudly, you need the city pride and your peers' pride and the whole of your, behalf of the goodest San Fernando.
Napri Magus.
Napri Magus, what do you want to do, what do you want?
I want to be a doctor.
What do you do, doctor, like a bunny? Muri? Okay, she's following her parents, congratulations, Siri.
Thank you very much, your worship, and we would like at this point to ask a representative of the Grand Memorial Presbyterian School to come up and receive a small token of recognition from his worship and Kiran, Mr Singh, the head of the chamber. So that now we go to our second place, place second in the SCA examinations in Trinidad and Tobago, again from San Fernando, Ms Megan Ramutah, student. a student of the San Fernando T M L Primary School. And to be presented by, again by his worship, the mayor Alderman Junior Regale and Mr. Kiran Singh, head of the.
We do, but no idea interview. Okay, so let's start, so, what school are you attending?
San Fernando T M L Primary.
And which school did you pass from?
St Joseph's, from San.
And what you want to do when you grow up?
I don't know yet.
No, 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 I think you need to tell us. You have no idea? Okay, well, we will test your judgment, ladies. Congratulations on behalf of the good San Fernando Chamber and members of council, and you can make us proud.
There's an envelope as well, I think. Uh, could the young lady just hold on just a moment? And now we would ask a representative of the San Fernando T M L Primary School to come up and accept a token of acknowledgement for the success. And then we have. No, we had a representative, I don't think the principal was here, your worship, so we had a representative receive. Manasa Mohammed, who placed third in the S A examinations from Kenan Presbyterian.
Three times, so tell us your name?
Manasa Mohammed.
Okay, and what you want to do when you grow up?
Paila.
Yeah, Paila. And a big show that you want to work with?
But she's young, yeah.
By that, by time you grow up and become a pilot, we are the biggest airline in, in the world. We can fly very high, okay? Congratulations, you make us proud and you continue, okay, congratulations.
And now we ask a representative from the Kenan Presbyterian School.
And before we complete, um, warn all the students to gather today, a group shot for everybody. At the end, at the end, at the end we finish, okay? So don't, don't leave please.
So now the representative from the Kenan Presbyterian School. And your worship, I believe, oh, there we are, the representative from Kenan Presbyterian. And just to mention, your worship, the principal, I believe, of the T M L Primary Schools, San Fernando T M L Primary is here, Mrs. Rohida Mohammed, is she here? Yes, there she is, and councillor Anderson Williams of Laser Four West Laramie wanted me to say on the microphone, your worship, that she was his teacher at T M L Primary.
Let me just say something, if she was your teacher, is either she looking there and you looking back?
Thank you very much, your worship, is Joshua Jacky here? Yes, he is, so we missed him in the first set, your worship, Joshua Jacky, and councillor Maygam Joseph is not here, so we will ask for you to present on his behalf, a young man who just completed the S A examinations. And now we have an acknowledgement, your worship, which will be done. Your worship, I'm getting old, I have to put on the glasses, Mr. Imshaz.
From the San Fernando TML Primary School, and I believe that acknowledgement, your worship, is being handled by Mr. Hansi Ajuda, but I would ask, your worship, would you stay and join Mr. Ajuda? It is an acknowledgement.
Thank you very much, and good morning, your worship and members of the council. Just before I make the presentation, I think there's something that ought to be known to the people gathered here, that many people, it's a little old story of 1990 and the 29th of July. A San Fernando coincidentally was with me on guard from Garda Diversion, people don't know that Imam Bakr tried to take the national broadcasting service again because the throne of TV, 7:30 Radio had been shut down, and we were there six days. I was there with six officers from TV that attempted to take back the stage on Sunday night. It was defended by the San Fernando who led the defense, the now deceased Sergeant Thornhill.
Thornhill, December 8th. Remember, and skip to next to your question. Correct, and we used to talk about San Fernando every night. All right, and by the way, I grew up on Rushworth and Gordon Street. This is still Mr. Imshaz Hussein, who is at present a teacher at the San Fernando TML Primary School. He's a hardworking and dedicated teacher with over 18 years' teaching experience. His commitment to excellence is evident in his results. He's been teaching at the standards four and five levels since 2013, and during this time, he has had four exam classes in which 33 of his students were in the top 200, 33 in the top 200. In 2013, he taught the third place student, and this year, he taught the second place student, Megan Ramutah. There is still in contribution to education in our city. The Greater San Fernando Chamber of Commerce wishes to congratulate Mr. Hussein on his achievement. We applaud your efforts, sir, and hope that you continue to mold our children to be outstanding youngsters. Mr. Imshaz Hussein. Can you come up, please, sir?
While Mr. Ajuda gets ready to go forward, your worship, I can invite you to sit.
I believe we have a presentation to make to Sastri Nagisa. And let me call up on Sastri, the Greater San Fernando Chamber. Sastri Nagisa. I believe the child is here. All right, I'll call on Mr. David Ramnas, who is the treasurer of the Greater San Fernando Chamber. Thank you very much, your worship, and members of the council.
I put together a draft. I'll hand the treasure of the Greater San Fernando Chamber of Commerce, okay? And we like the hand at the chamber. We want to recognize excellence in academics as well, and in that regard, we have three outstanding individuals from San Fernando who wish to recognize. So first, first and foremost, let me again recognize Mr. Ian Athely, who's a member of the.
Which here?
Our chamber.
Okay.
Who's a kindly and good person, so I'll scroll him forward. So there's a very pretty young lady who has done exceptionally well, and in that regard, I'd like to, there's a very secret that nobody knows at this time, our esteemed president, Mr. Kiran Singh, has been a very beautiful young girl, young child, and who has done exceptionally well in the state exam. So I would like Mr. Athely to give an award to Miss Kiran Singh, the daughter of our esteemed president, Mr. Kiran Singh.
Inside, I traded. Inside, I traded. She passed in Napruma, I think. Do you take her mother good looks, boy?
No, no, I wouldn't have you there before as well. Okay, thank you, Athely. Okay, and we have two more to go, four outstanding students, okay, who are members of our chamber, whose children has done exceptionally well academically as well. So in that regard, we have to recognize Mr. Ail Bissassis Singh, who has completed her studies in medicine. She was a former student of Napruma College, San Fernando, and a scholarship winner. So Mr. Ail Bissassis Singh, Dr. Ail Bissassis Singh. We have the money here to collect a token on behalf of the Greater San Fernando Chamber of Commerce.
We have another member of the chamber whose son has done exceptionally well, also a scholarship winner from Napruma Boys College. Dr. Christian Ramna, right? I think they said duty calls and they had to stay at the hospital to the acts, but our president had come and collect an award on behalf of Dr. Christian Ramna, right? Former scholarship winner and a former student from San Fernando. Okay, I can feel, and that's my little presentation of the Greater San Fernando Chamber. Now that, apologies to everyone who did not.
Thank you so much. The Members of Congress, the administration, and all the members of the San Fernando Chamber for this very, very, very noble exchange today this morning, as we acknowledge those students at every level of work, their contribution, and more importantly, make San Fernando proud. We are our responsibility to make San Fernando better than how we made it, and as good towards that, I think, there's very exciting times, and I'm looking at some of these young people there, one of you, many of you, to be sitting around this worship, and yes, they know that should be, it should just be a dream, to run that, to bring back, give back something to the city. So congratulations, parents, congratulations on the hard work and commitment you've made when you're such a kid on the right track, because there's so many negative things being said about young people, whenever we see positive, it must be highlighted. Ignore what is happening outside there, we are very happy, very safe and secure in San Fernando, and you, your parents, and your commitment, and you are a winner, this is what I think it features San Fernando, safe and secure, I thank you.
And we're getting familiar with it. We did it from present bill, for doctors who brought to me some time ago, it was forwarded to the injured air department. We have to see where it fell down, where it went wrong.
You spoke when we meeting just started about the homeless children, the promenade, attacking by the bars. Can I just remind us of that?
Well, there were two instances reported to us where, before school closed, a child was molested by a homeless person opposite by Zarasi. Of course, there was another matter, the nurse coming from, from work one evening, late shift, and there were some trees opposite some poles, and the person's hiding behind the tree, he snatched her bag and held her hand, and we have since removed those two trees there, for that reason, as well as the fact that the root of the treatment damaging the footpath.
What about in terms of security?
Well, as you would have heard at the meeting, I spoke to the superintendent, there's twenty some, twenty-five officers will be coming on the end of August, going to augment what currently exists, and we're going to ask them at this meeting to have it, have it recorded and admitted that there will be a normal patrol on the promenade on the evening and morning shifts.
Were you talking, because I was in here, clearly, about seventy-five new police officers being, coming into your complement?
Right, so we are getting, we currently have forty-nine officers. Actually, we have fifty-three supposed to be on duty, available to us, only forty-nine is available, so forty-nine plus twenty-five, that's some, so she's going to revisit what our strategy would be. We spoke about High Street, we spoke about Library Corner, we spoke about the promenade.
Vendors.
Vendors, at Library Corner.
That's, that's not allowed.
Right, so it's not allowed. Well, we want to deal specifically with the vending of market goods, which not supposed to be there because causing a problem at Central Market, defenders are personally not going to the market to purchase their, their produce, they come into the Library Corner. So we are, we are working on, on that, and as she said, as Hussein is going to be, as a man, Paul will be augmented, she'll be able to address those issues.
And I think the market vendors themselves had an issue with the, the market in terms of leaks and toilets.
Most of that has been, has been rectified, and it's a work in progress. I think the main concern is the fact that people, or goods are not leaving the market and being sold at Library Corner, and we're being redistributed, and that's the main concern. What we.
No, I think, I think with the infrastructure.
Yeah. Well, the civil money have been spent on the market, and the gate has been changed, and there are some parts of the market that, that is no longer being used, so they're not paying attention, that's the back ear, we're not paying any attention to that. We're really focusing on the front part where people are vending.
It's all important, Spain, that they're feeding people on the street, and you are trying to stop that, is there a conflict of?
I mean, both cities?
Yes. Both Spain cities. You're allowing it in San Fernando.
Yeah, well, maybe we have a, a measure that, that can, that can treat with it. I'm not sure if Port Spain has one. The homeless shelter that started under former mayor Hussein is now up and running, there's an issue looking after it, and it's functioning, and every Sunday we treat, and we want to increase from Sunday to maybe three days a week, as opposed to one day. We also look at the possibility of keeping them overnight, because when you look at the rainy season, and you see those people in a very inhumane condition, on the strip on cardboard, and being exposed to the weather, it's kind of, it's really hard. So we're trying to, what we do on a Sunday, besides feeding and clothing and giving them a shower, we also have a conversation with them to develop a sense of, listen, you have a responsibility to work with us, as opposed to seeing us being, you know, being opposed to us. And so that approach, that conversation is making some headway, the understanding, and we bought in, we bought draft boards, we bought television, so not only they're eating and leaving, but it's been considerable on the time on a Sunday. I would draft them last Sunday. So we're socializing, and we're hanging off, hanging off of them. I actually gave one of them a lift last week.
What about rehabilitation?
But that's the process, that's what we're working towards. So it has to be done gradually, we must develop trust on both sides. They must believe that we're not a threat, and that we don't want to get rid of them, but we want to help them, and that is beginning to play itself and work itself in. So we, we are working in that direction, and once they believe that we are going to help them, then they'll stay overnight, we already have secured cuts, we have to find some level of ensuring that there's security for overnight and for management. We also want to get the other station, the station next to the ocean, next to the building, up and running, so we'll have that, that presence of police down there. So I think by the end of the year, that should be rectified.
Is it for both male and female?
Yes, we want to, we already identified how we're going to separate both, both sides. What may, what challenge may be at this point, is to have this management, somebody must be present overnight, so we're working on that, and I must commend those volunteers and social organizations who are given of the free time and are contributing to this exercise.